I called her today too. That's her and what for the message, I didn't think she out of town? She has to prepare.
Is that yours?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you want to use it?
I probably need that too, or you know.
Oh, I'll check it out.
Okay, so you got your phone, you have a nap?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
We got that storm short, so we gotta repair the runs down the alley there.
That's really good.
She's probably in the alley there.
I don't know how they use this thing, and it's gonna quit a few years or something.
Yeah, it goes to store. Or release some of them.
I used to take it out with the kids and they were way better with it than I was.
Did Russell do you? No. I talked to him the other day, told me one time.
Hi there!
Alright, so that's it. Yeah, we got your accent, but first question.
I'll go trick off another one.
You got to look at that brand.
Did he tell you I went to Albany last weekend?
Was it a long page?
Yes.
It's interesting.
It was just a short note and then a vaccine.
I got a copy of those that.
That you had.
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. We're talking, we were talking. Tonight after work about stuff that you probably.
This is the stuff I gave you today?
Kinda find interesting.
That thing from Catherine? Oh, was she doing some comparisons?
Yeah, which.
Not really, she's just.
I would tell you about it, then say what towns are comparing.
Thinking more like you as time goes on about the world. See, this is the settings button by. It's not opening up. Probably because it's recorded. Much of the week, you know. See if it's on or not. This might be four hours and fifteen minutes.
Florida, they're back after.
So that's an indication maybe it doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
Tony, you're two steps.
Take your expertise.
Well, we'll see.
Okay, let's start school. Our pledge. Our pledge will be to do the flag of the United States of America. The truth is revealed for which to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty in the first order. Well, thank you, everybody.
Lenny, is that your truck out there, the green one?
Uh-huh.
Okay, 'cause somebody's pointing three, okay, she just wasn't sure it was your truck.
Yeah, thank you. Or my sister was.
One of them, that narrow the right now. Yeah. Oh, that one. Yeah.
Okay, we have a special guest with us tonight. Laura Appleby. This was recorded on the Historical Society.
Thank you.
She brought Jerry's log too, the back.
Yeah, he's my chauffeur. That's in case I fall down again. Don't mind me, I have to do bills. But I earn it. This is the 2020 town history and report. Hi, everyone. Well, 2020 is almost over and what a year it's been. The summer was hot and dry. Farmers had a hard time to get their hair, hay in early. And hardly anyone got a second cutting. With the office closed most of the time, we had limited foot traffic. But we did have a lot of calls from people looking for information on their ancestors that either lived in Pratsburg or passed through on their way up. Can you hear me, or can I just?
You can take that out.
Good. It felt like it was in a tunnel. We have been able to help many of them with the information on their ancestors, but sometimes we do run into a roadblock. But we always try our best. I'm still asking about the road signs in the cemetery. They have been a great help if people come in from other places and wanna find their ancestors' graves. So I'm hoping this next year, we can order the ones that we need to finish all of the roads. And, you know, if you need a list, I'll be happy to make one for you. If it's in the budget someplace. The first quarter of 2020, the funeral home was torn down. And now there is a beautiful green lawn there. The Historical Society benefited a few things from the contents of the house. The drapes that are hanging in the museum house, they fit our windows perfectly after being shortened. So they let us have all the drapes that they had downstairs. Also, a couple of file cabinets and two very nice leather chairs. In addition to all these things, the Historical Society was allowed to take pictures throughout the whole house interior. So we have that for the archives now too. Unfortunately, the death toll for 2020 Pratsburg natives reached 21 this year. And there's two more since I wrote this. Although the town has been quiet, there's been some construction going on in the town. Like at 10791 Fairgrounds Road, steps appeared from the blue pool deck. And then on June 24th, and then 20 House Street, a deck was built July 1st. At 18 Porter Street, there was a digition built on the back of their house, July 7th. In 10815 Fairgrounds Road, a pair of steps were built on July 2nd. A porch was built at 6771 Butts Road on the 3rd of July. And a porch was built on 16 Chapel Street. And finally, a pole barn was built on 25 Porter Street, October 20th. The United Methodist Church closed its doors December 31st, 2019. And the Historical Society benefited there also. A lot of the items, they donated to the museum for a display of church memorabilia. The church building has been still, as been rumored, that it was purchased by another church. And I think that's true 'cause I saw a flag flying there Sunday. There has been no activity in the park this year. And the Historical Society has not held any dinner meetings for their members. They have decided to hold the Fall Festival of Lights in the park, December 4th and 5th. The town and the people that pass through on Route 53 need that uplift thing with all the holiday lights. And the food pantry needs the food donation. During this time, the gift shop at the Historical Society Museum House will be open Saturday 5th and 12, 10 to 2. So everybody can come in and do your Christmas shopping. Enjoy the lights in the park and don't forget to do some Christmas shopping at the museum house. Thank you, and let me be the first to wish you Merry Christmas. Will Nora Appleby respectfully commit it.
Commit it. I commit it.
We all are.
I am committed.
Thank you.
And as I was reading this over again, like I said to Angela, I said, "We didn't ask to use the park." Yeah. Limo, and then I forgot about the limo then. So we have 33 trees coming. And we have four or five new ones this year, which is great. That helps some that we've lost, so.
So do we wanna ask formally?
What's that? Oh, yes, could we use the park, the 4th and 5th, for the trees?
For the entire month, actually.
Pardon me?
Entire month.
Yeah, until July or January. Oh, it's been a long day, till January 1st.
Okay, well, put it in the calendar and.
Okay, good, okay.
There you go. I think the board's set with it.
Pratsburg's fortunate to have such a good historian. Of all the towns and villages I represent, this is the only one that receives an annual report.
Oh, you're doing fine job.
Oh, you know.
Maybe next year I'm gonna raise.
Hundred percent.
Well, thank you.
Could you pay for the Jefferson? Thank you.
And the sign is, in the cemetery, now, a lot of them have been stolen or whatever. We put all new road signs up.
But you didn't put them where they crossed. Like if somebody came from a different.
Oh, okay.
When they came from a different one, then they wouldn't know this was the road they were looking for, because there's no signs where it crossed.
Get the names of that and it was a bit harder. Because I see there's, I think there's three signs that are gone.
Really?
Really?
I haven't noticed that. I know there's one evergreen up on the corner there, I think one of the machines from the firework out there.
Yeah, I know, I do too, but there was two others that I think there was three that come.
Oh, I'll have to take a look. I'll check those out.
Yeah, get me a list and.
I will.
I'll get them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Good night, thanks a lot.
Good night. See you, George.
Bye, George.
See you guys.
We got an opening guest, Kevin.
See you, George.
So I just wanted to give a quick update. We had the online open house, that was on Wednesday for the transcript and the video, the capture of it is now posted online. There were some questions that we got to that we put online and there are some questions we didn't get to put online. Now, there's a couple other things that we're trying to set up. One of the people who I corresponded with wanted us to kinda set up a, for lack of a better, a field trip or at least show him where he could stand relative to other turbines to get a good idea of what it may sound like at a certain distance. So we're researching that and we'll get back to him, we'll probably use Howard and maybe another local place, not Cohocton, because Cohocton just isn't the sound of a normal turbine. And we'll do that and we'll, you know, if we need to host something, if you will, we'll do that. So it's kind of come and see what a turbine sounds like from X feet or that sort of stuff. We just need a little bit of time to research the sound characteristics of the local turbines so that we are telling them the right distances. So when that happens, we can email you guys to let you know also when we do that. We have gotten word from Howard and Avoca that they would like to start working on the road use agreement and the host community agreement. So I don't know if you guys want to do that in conjunction with the Greater Meeting of Supervisors or not, but Aaron Mellon reached out and said, you know, why don't we start going to work on road use and host community agreement, at least the language of them. And we said, "Fine," and so I wanted to bring that up. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but it certainly doesn't hurt to start working on either one of those documents, at least the language of them.
Do you have a copy, I don't mean to interrupt you, Kevin, but do you have a copy of Pratsburg Road Use Law?
I'm not sure. Can you email me just to make sure I do? I thought I downloaded that before, but maybe I couldn't get the most.
I'm surprised you can't.
I can send you one.
Perfect, thank you, Kim. So we'll work in conjunction of that along with, you know, we need to put in, whether it's adherence to yours, typically towns' road use agreements aren't as robust as a road use agreement that's negotiated. But let me take another look and we'll see. And the same thing, I can send you the language or Aaron can. The thought is to use the same kind of host community agreement language that every other town uses. But of course, that's not mandatory, it's just a thought.
Yeah, we'd like to look at that definitely.
So that's, I mean, and that's gonna take place over a number of months because it needs to be voted on and so forth. But, you know, when I was speaking with Don Ebia, he said, you know, why don't we start the process sooner rather than later? And that was spurred on by Aaron Mullin, actually, is the one who said, "Look, why don't we start that sooner rather than later?" So, so let's get the copies, let's start to exchange. We would like to and we'll send out an email in the next couple days. You know, we left Ulan with some visual impact information, kind of some areas in which we were gonna take a look at. We'll send a reminder email and maybe you can forward it along. We would be looking for some feedback on that. I don't know if you recall in the meeting, we said, "Look, here's kind of how we look to do the visual impact." We still have time to do that, obviously, but we'd start to like to get, you know, an idea of what the town thinks. Are there any other viewpoints that needs to do? Along with soliciting from you guys, of course, we're soliciting from the other ones. I can tell you, you're not first, but you aren't last either. We've got no feedback, so we just wanna kinda push that along so that we can move along with the visual impact assessment. So that's moving forward, starting tonight and going for the next several nights. There are information and feedback sessions for the new 94C process. My understanding is the one for tomorrow night was in Buffalo, has been moved to online only because Erie County's numbers are up. The one, actually, maybe tonight in Rochester. There are still, bottom line is, there's still several opportunities to listen in or to provide feedback into the ORES process. You can find that information on the Department of Public Service website. I believe I also emailed that to the town board members some time ago, or to the town supervisors. And, you know, it's the opportunity. To be honest with you, I just heard on Saturday or Sunday about the Buffalo one, which is tomorrow night being moved online. So I don't know what the registration processes are like that. But it certainly gives more people an opportunity, since it's online, to show up as opposed to, you know, if it was in person, you had to go there. So that's happening over the next several days. I also heard grumblings, although this is not confirmed, that they may now, because of some of the increased numbers, they may do some additional online input sessions in order to get people to do it, just simply because if they don't feel comfortable going to the meetings, they can do that. I will have, I do have a slightly modified transportation routing, I'll send that to John. It's a tweak, it's not much, not much, but I'll send it to you just so, just so we have that. And that's all I can think of, I can answer questions that anybody has.
Have you got the one you're gonna file?
No. What we did was we had a lot of questions from the public information session and we have been digesting those. We also have been working on some final agreements. My guess is February, March for an application of 2021. I think that's probably. March is probably realistic, honestly. The statutory requirements are that it's at least 60 days past what they call it. So the earliest would be January 5th, we won't be ready by January 5th, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
And then my question would be, I don't know, if you guys could give me an update, or give me a copy of whatever was changed or in the process of being changed at the wind law in regards to sound? And then we can start to factor any of those changes or what have you into our designs.
The town board asked me to add a few provisions and they've got those. I don't know if we're gonna do that tonight or at a special meeting, but we're almost done.
Okay, then just email to me, because if there's any changes that we need to try to design to, we'll try to design to whatever that is. I can tell you that other towns are tweaking and or changing their laws as well. So it's not something that we're not familiar or waiting for. Avoca's, I think, has been in process for a little while. Howard, when I spoke with Don Ebia, said that the planning board was taking a look at things, but that'll take some months to hammer down, I'm sure. That's all I can think of.
How are you changing the FAA?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You were reading here from the FAA in regards to the power lighting?
Yeah, in terms of the lighting, yes.
Radar activated.
Yeah, so what I will tell you is, and I should forward you the message that I got from our consultants. Their reply on radar activated lighting was this. They have seen it, there are three different vendors, one of them is a turbine manufacturer, two of them is like a third-party vendor. What our consultants have seen is, they have not seen a case thus far where the radar activated lighting actually will cause all of the lighting to go off and all of it to go on to radar activated lighting. Meaning, there may be some, or there may be fewer turbines that are lit all the time, but it has not been, in their limited experience with it, there has not been an experience where it would cause all of the radar, where all radar activated lighting could be used. In other words, there would still be, at this point, some that will be used as a permanent light. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, it's a relatively new technology. That doesn't mean by 2023 or 2024, that can't be used. But they just cautioned me to say that if towns or what have you are expecting that to be a silver bullet, that there will no longer be any lights on permanently except when they're activated by radar. The technology is not to that point yet that they've seen. Any of that mumbled grammar make any sense?
Yeah. I didn't catch.
I mean, I would, I would kinda.
I'd like to see the memo.
Blocker that a little bit because I've actually installed them. Going across the night, wherever there's some radar activated ones up there that are off all the time and.
On a wind project?
No, they're on a tower that's 550 foot tall.
Oh, I'm just telling you what my consultants told me in regards to the wind projects that they did. They said that there has not been a case that they've seen that all of the lights have been turned off.
Could you send us that memo?
Yes, I certainly can. Now, that is not, you know, that's one consultant's experience with the lighting system. You know, I don't know, I suppose it might be potential to speak to the FAA directly about that. But I think that, you know, shy of that, we just have to go on what I was being told by consultants.
Just a few more questions, right?
Sure.
Any idea when the, like, the sound studies might be released and the AVIAN studies?
Well, AVIAN studies are, we have a meeting with ORES on, I think, the 24th, so that's next Tuesday. And we can, you know, once they give sign off on it, we can release that. The biggest holdup on the sound studies is simply just continually shifting turbines. And we just haven't locked down all of the turbine locations. You know, we're shifting, I'll give you a prime example. We had a turbine location that we thought was working and then it interfered with the microwave path. So we have to shift the turbine out of the microwave path. And that would cause us to rerun the sound study because the turbine is no longer in the spot. And, you know, in this case, it was a move of 150 or 200 feet, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot. So it's, you know, Pete, it's just a constant jockeying of, you know, this landowner is, we're finalizing the agreement, can't do it. As soon as I have it, we will put it out.
Kevin, on your online, about you had there, they were talking about a virtual visual impact.
A virtual visual?
Impact, where they're gonna, they're gonna be able to provide, you guys are gonna be able to provide a virtual visual impact of the project?
I'm sure something like that can be done from certain vantage points and, you know, all of the visual impact, if any of you remember back when, when you did a visual impact, you actually had to fly balloons and take pictures. And then, you know, you'd use those pictures. Now it's all online, it's all, you know, simulations. So I'm sure that something could be put together from a computer-based visual impact that will certainly give more information, yes. And all of that will come, you know, part of the, I was saying, all of the holdup, but part of the holdup is getting an idea from the towns of what they feel are good vantage points for the visual impact and getting input of that. It's, I would say it would be difficult to show visual impact from every spot of every part of the town. So that's why we asked for some input back. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to scold, we haven't gotten any input back from them, but we haven't gotten any input back from any of the towns. So that may be something that you guys can share around and just kind of do that. But that's the nice thing about the current visual impact is that it can be done computer generated.
Just one thing, and this is while I think about it. Now, you left a note with, we're about to, yeah, we're over to a meeting here. To get ahold of Kim. Anybody? I'm forgetting all.
It wasn't to, it wasn't to get ahold of me, but people were confused because it said Town Hall. And they thought it was the Town Hall meeting.
Okay, I apologize that that, you know. I apologize, Kim, if you got angry phone calls or whatever, I apologize, I didn't.
People, they said that when they tried to go log on to it to register, they weren't real successful. One of the gentlemen came in, I logged on and I registered him very easily, so I don't know if he just really wasn't positive of what he was doing, but people were definitely confused because it said Town Hall.
Well, that was supposed to be in reference to a Town Hall type meeting. We should have made it more clear that it was virtual. The good news is, it was all recorded, all the questions were recorded, and that can all be viewed online. And then, of course, what I try to stress and continue to try to stress is, is that people don't need to wait for an open house to get their questions answered. They can submit them directly to me, they can call me, they can, you know, it's something that, yes, I realize that that's the, you know, kind of a forum for questions, but it certainly isn't the only forum for questions. And I know it's a little different in these meetings now, but I do come to these meetings now and, you know, anyone can get the phone number and the email address off the website and can answer, you know, we can try to answer questions. And it's actually been very good, like I said. I had some dialogue with this gentleman and we're gonna try to get, at least he and his wife, but we may be able to get others to say, "Look, here's a point at the Howard Wind Farm that's X number of feet away. We expect this will sound like something and we can kind of distribute that information so that they know." His concern was that, you know, the Cohocton project just sounds so much different and so we wanted to try to get him that, you know, that information, so.
Kevin, you mentioned, I'm sorry, Aaron Mullin talking about the host agreement, and you have to forgive me, I had it on a bill, so I was listening to both. Who's he representing? When he put that in person?
Wheeler, Avoca, and Howard.
Okay, so he's their attorney?
Yes. And you, of course, are welcome to not take a look at the road use agreement or the host community.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I just was.
Yeah.
You'll move on with that.
Yeah.
So Wheeler, Avoca, and Howard.
Yes.
Kevin, another one concern I do have, you guys were mentioning that you're gonna possibly be using Vessel brand wind turbines?
Vestas, yes.
Vestas, sorry. So obviously, these things are big, you know, they're painted white for a reason, most cases the generators are all white. I know with the ones that I saw, the Vestas turbines, there's some in Western New York, they're plastic with their logos on top and they're actually a huge eyesore. Something that is negotiable in the construction of these?
I see no reason why we couldn't tell them to not put the logo of the town thing.
Kevin, it does, the sticks sound like a sore thumb, and they've got, whatever, had a couple hundred up there and the only thing you see is those five random vestas up there that never spin, but.
I see, I see no reason why we couldn't tell them that the town ordinance requires us to not put any signage on them. Actually, I do recall in the days of Howard, Howard had limitations on what types of signage or what types of things could go on there. So that's just a decal that they put on to ensure that that could easily be removed.
Can I add that to the code very?
One last question, Kevin.
Sure.
Thanks for being here and answering. I know you mentioned earlier in the process that each site would have its own geologic surveys, so to speak. Given the timing of it, is that still something that can be done over the course of the winter or is that?
Okay, so this is what happens is, is that we did what we call preliminary geotech, which surveys a certain number of, they spread out, they look at, you know, different ridge lines, that sort of stuff. And we did, I think it was eight locations plus substation, plus some just general soils in the area. So what that does is, that gives us a report that tells us, you know, a pretty good idea. So what that does is that gives us a report that tells us, you know, a pretty good idea of the geotech in the area. And a pretty good idea of what the subsurface is like, what types of foundations we might need to design, that sort of stuff. Prior to construction, we will do a geotechnical, once all of those locations are nailed down and the permit is given. We will do a additional boring. Now, if one of those borings happen to stay the same, I'm sure we won't do another one. But every boring location, every location will be bored and the geotech taken at that specific site to confirm what the preliminary geotech did. But, you know, they're pretty good at spreading it out, so knowing kind of what it is. Um, and they test a variety of different resources to know, hey, generally in this area we have that. But then again, prior to construction, they will do one, uh, will do a boring at every site. Any other questions, any questions from crowd? I shouldn't say crowd. Socially distant.
During the last few meetings, I had said we have a crowd.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, when I was here last time, it was just me.
It's actually more than we had that memo, we're being recorded.
Okay, well, I don't, you certainly don't need to hear me speak, and I don't need to hear myself speak, so, um, I will email you or have someone email you or Aaron, you know, whatever, um.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, it may have been Aaron's form document, I don't, I honestly don't know. I just was told, hey, they'd like to start to talk about it.
Right.
And I said, fine, so we'll get you that, and then get me just whatever, um, changes, and then think about visual impact. Um, and then think about another supervisor's meeting, because I think that those are, um, pretty helpful to get, um, people around the tape.
Right.
So to speak.
Okay.
And thinking.
Excellent.
All right, thanks everybody.
Is this what you wanted to, wanted to have?
I see.
It's updated eleven three.
Thought it was thicker than this.
Well, I think I did mine from that.
No, this is.
Okay.
The, uh, minutes, uh, of the, uh, four twenty, two thousand and twenty meetings. And the ten nineteen, two thousand and twenty meetings. I have a chance to read.
I'm gonna read it word for word by any means, but I did skim through it.
I.
Quite interesting.
Angela read it word for word.
Did you?
You know, I, I offered to help her.
Did you stutter, I was like, I'm faint as well?
I, I told Kim, I said, you know, we have conversations, I think we sound really good. But in reading the minutes, you sometimes sound giddy.
Lot of ohs and ands.
Well, just because, you know, when we're conversing, you converse, you're not speaking always in complete sentences, so, but when you transcribe it as such, it is kind of odd. But yes, I, you know, they were, I mean, I think the terminologies were changed, you know, like the names that were misspelled. You know, Len was Glen, Pete was Pizza. Um, so, yeah, so.
We're gonna have dinner that night.
Right.
But yeah, so I mean, I did review them pretty thoroughly, um, and made notes. And things that didn't make sense, but I knew what we were talking about, so she was able to update them. You know, about to do the conversation, so. So I would make a motion to accept the minutes, I would give them to both together, of April twentieth, two thousand and twenty, and October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Councilman Bank, can I second?
The, uh, Supervisor McCannell, the minutes of the, uh, four twenty, twenty twenty, and ten nineteen, twenty twenty minutes for meetings. Uh, and, uh, read and accepted, all in favor?
Councilwoman Eyelocker, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bank, deny.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCannell, aye. Financial report.
Councilman Bank, deny the motion to accept the financial report as presented.
Councilman Underhill, I'll second.
Motion, it may that the, uh, financial report be accepted as presented, all in favor?
Councilwoman Eyelocker, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bank, deny.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCannell, aye. The, uh, audit of bills.
I noticed that the bills, like, you didn't even have a chance to sign yours.
I didn't sign it, yeah, I'm chicken and mushroom all day.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll sign it tomorrow.
Yeah, but you're pretty, I mean, nothing was, you're anywhere, okay. But I make a motion to.
I don't know the one we can, but the two of you, they're both pretty good, hardworking kids. Yeah, that's what I'd like to, I'd like one and the other one I'd like to hire in October, actually, I might like two out of the three in there. So.
Have you interviewed them, or just?
This is the first time I saw that case, it's today.
Okay, okay. They had to be in by Friday?
But I have to, uh.
Well, you will interview them, right?
Yeah, I have to move on this, so, cause I've gotta give people, whether they're working somewhere else, give them time to put in their resignation, so.
Let me clarify what I said a few minutes ago. The person does not have to join the union.
Right.
However, the union, in terms of the collective bargaining agreement, would apply to that person. So you can't try to talk the guy out of joining the union, or woman joining the union to avoid having health insurance, paid holidays, leaves and so forth.
I'm aware of that. I know my job is just to hire them and help the union steward to present the information to them, and if they want to join, that's up to them. Not, not for me to decide one way, that.
Exactly.
The only thing, we lose our voting rights.
Very probably.
The only thing, we lose our voting rights.
Voting rights and not paying dues.
Well, they don't have to pay.
Oh, that's, that's right. For public employees, that's what the Supreme Court came up with.
Okay, now. Uh. Storm shore. Uh, I, I gave that a, um, a drawing that John Geis sent me for, uh, running that, rerunning that pipe down that alleyway in the back of the sewers. It's, uh, all topped up on the ground.
The one in the alleyway? The one in the alleyway?
Yeah. So, uh, he's giving us a, I said they wanted something ready, but because it's private property. So he's giving us a, and he's got it, reviewing.
Who is he?
Very probably.
Who's this gentleman?
John Geis, he owns, uh, the restaurant or?
Oh, the building, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Delio's?
Yeah, but, uh, that alleyway goes down through.
Right, she showed me that.
So we gotta, uh, re, re, reset that pipe. Uh, I believe the pipe is all right, it's just gotta be reset, we're talking, reset.
Is this the same John Geis who was IDA director one time, years ago?
He's what?
Didn't he run the IDA years ago?
I was.
No, he worked for, uh, RGD, he was, uh, the gas site.
Okay.
So he's first, he's on board, and it's something we gotta have because of drains all that. Matter of fact, it drains everything from the town burn, all the way down to. So, that's in works. Uh. The, uh, not as far as that's the, the project itself. Still, nowhere, no, it isn't, uh, it isn't moving much, it's, uh, uh, JC is, is working on it, but, uh, given the, the times and the, and what's going on here. It's, uh, everything is, is still.
This is a corollary to that, I think we're at the point where we decided that there's no problem going ahead with the, uh, using that.
The green?
Green.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything we can do to get around the delays?
It's a money thing, isn't it?
Well, I mean, the, the issue is every month we wait, the price goes up.
Right.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I think the problem is it.
Trying to get these agencies at this point, for at least money, or the, we, we know we have, uh, a majority of, of seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand that we need to, to, to make it work, if people can handle the cost. Uh, that, that's the problem.
Yeah, I understand that, just, just concerning is the price has gone up significantly since we started it and.
Yep, and it's gonna, uh, materials are going right out of sight. There, it's, uh, it's crazy. So, well, I mean, just, you know, JC's working on it.
I've heard from him in months or more.
I heard last week.
Did you?
One day he called and just, uh, said that, uh, you know, he was, uh, still in the bill, working with it, but, uh, you know, just wasn't getting any feedback.
Well, it's, the last time I talked to him, we had discussed having a phone conference with the federal representative. And that person didn't want to do it.
Who's, which one?
I forgot, I didn't, Rep. or something like that.
Federal representative from where?
From the lending agency.
Oh.
The money that, the attorney, he was the attorney.
Okay.
We had two conferences before, phone conferences. And he had gone over all the criteria for the loans and grants and such. And there was, it was due for an update from us. And JC thought that we needed another phone conference because we hadn't moved forward. But this guy just wanted something ready.
Hmm.
No.
And kind of, it's tough to, uh, I, I talked down, down the way, uh, in the SDA, I've talked to some others, and uh, even about the town bar, uh, trying to get some information, trying to get something going on that, and, uh, we're just trying out there, they're saying, you know, timeout.
Well, the state has no money.
Sorry.
State has no money. And the federal government, obviously that money is tied up, and there's really not any money to have. We just can't do that.
Yeah, they both have money. It's just a matter of getting it, I, I, I think it was.
Well, they do, but the state is in what, how many?
Yeah, my, my concern is, I guess the state suspended that, that funding process that they, it sort of, the name escapes me.
Yeah.
Um, and from what I recall from the last conversation with the folks from the IDA, said that we're more glamorous projects in the queue ahead of ours. So we're not even likely to get into that process for two thousand and twenty-one. And if the cost goes up the same next year as it went up last year, we're going to have another half a million dollars.
Right, it's going up.
I mean, we're chasing a moving target, we can't catch up.
It's true. Yeah, I have one Naples with their, uh, water district. They kept having to redo it, because every time they.
Water or sewer?
Water, sewer's been working, some of the water.
But what do you do in that situation? I mean, you, you have to wait till they're gonna start releasing the money, it's not like you can put the burden on the.
No, but it's the nature of the economy right now.
Right.
And, uh, the procedure that the state has statutorily set up requires you in your, our, in your, uh, map plan and report to put in figures that will be required. And when you get your bids back, they exceed that, so you gotta do that process again, so it's almost like perpetual motion. And the architects and engineers, um, finally figured out that they gotta add a percentage increase just because of the passage of time. So, uh.
And then you're restricted to how much you can add.
That's true.
We're doing everything on a five percent escalator every year.
I'm surprised it's not twenty percent right now.
Well, I ask if, if it'd be possible, if we could buy some material with what money's been allotted. And we can't touch that until everything is, uh.
Would you mind if I saw JC Smith and got an update?
Yeah, cause I thought he's, we could buy some of the material and have it, you know.
You know, what, kind of going back to, you know, the town barn, which I think is needed really bad. So we have Terrigen running around here with a pocket full of money. I don't know why we're scrambling and scratching our heads wondering where we're getting money for this funding. The money just walked out of the meeting. I mean, to me, that's part of your, that's part of our host, uh, create, uh, host, uh, community agreement. You know, we know that we need a million dollar building. They got a pocket full of our money anyways from all the government, all our tax money anyways, they might as well put it back in our account. I mean, that should be one of the, one of the annual payments.
Yeah, they get their money from tax credits.
Right. But to me, that's.
I agree, anything we get from them should not reduce the taxes, you know, going to.
Projects.
Projects, capital improvement project.
But the sewer is the issue that we're talking about.
Well, that's a different matter, because you're talking about the specific part of the town. That's the problem there, the district, I don't see how.
I did jump over, sorry.
There's very limited.
Talking about Tom's.
No, but you're correct, yeah.
There's very limited authority as to what general funds can be used for.
Right.
Sewer project, the only you can use general funds in the town for is the actual map plan and report. And once you get past that, any of the actual development costs have to be on the, the district.
And that even goes as far out, far as if that district was borrowed money from, from the town? I mean, is that possible, if you take some of that, the funding from?
Generally speaking, a municipality cannot loan money, even.
Even to its own district?
Well, the district is a whole separate municipality, even though the same group of people are running that. So you could actually look at it as a conflict of interest. If you as a town bar are loaning money to yourselves as the commission for the water district, or the sewer district, whatever it is, there'd actually be a conflict of interest there. Other than what's provided for statutorily, and that's just the first step there, the, uh, map plan and report. But we should be talking to, not only to JC, but also the, the engineers. Generally, those folks get into the funding process also. But that's, first, that's better. With, with, with any, with that, our intent is to have a little bit of infrastructure.
Right, and that, but I think that, you know, that's one thing we haven't done effectively is, is a board, or even getting community input. I mean, he's throwing around numbers that I, I find laughable, I mean, that's a lot, I mean, you see a lot of money, but, you know, if it's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars split up four ways or three ways, isn't a lot of money for the town. Um, they have pockets enough. Well, I mean, that's, we have a lot of things that need to be done in this community that we could severely, or majorly improve things in this community with, with their money. And that should be a one, a one-time deal. You know, one of the annual payments is the new highway butter.
Well, I tend to set up a meeting with other supervisors here, uh, I don't want to.
The last time we had one of those, it didn't seem, well, first of all, they didn't want to negotiate as a unit with Terrigen, we were the only ones that suggested it. The other ones wanted to do it on their own. And then the last time we had a supervisor's meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Pete was there, it seemed like they didn't want to do another one for a while.
Well, I think, no, with the loan agreement and all that, and I question whether, I think it'd be a good time to do it without Kevin.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I think some of the resistance to meeting right away again was that we didn't have any new information to work on.
That's, you're probably right.
And now that we already do, some of those, if you agree with you, my, it would be a good time to pull folks out.
Well, I think it's, I mean, it's, it's kind of foolish not to negotiate together as far, I mean, you got everyone on the same page, Bransford, Avoca, Wheeler, Howard, and Kohakken, to reconcile or anything less than this, cause it's pretty close to split equally as far as turbines on per town.
For Bransford and Avoca, uh, I don't, I don't know what exactly.
I think there were three of those HLDs with nine turbines roughly, so it was a bulk project.
So if you stick, they all stick together, I mean, that.
That is it, if you get all three of your supervisors together and, and bargain as in all three together, you probably have a lot more say.
Sort of doing.
I mean, if you go in there, if you go in there and tell me you want a million dollars a year, I mean, really, three million dollars a year for this windmill company isn't a lot of money.
And it's silly. And it's silly to negotiate separate, that, thought that when they said it.
Well, or even the unions, power and numbers.
Terrigen is gonna, where are you now?
Hmm?
Individually.
Well, I'm gonna call, get, talk to all of us, says the meeting, I'll, I, I should do it without Kevin, so that we can...
Oh, definitely.
They, they'll definitely be all... I had talked to Kevin previously, and he pretty much told me that if I was gonna put a ton of money into the roads when they were leaving, fixed up when they were done, that would probably cut back any amount of money we get in our host community agreement. You know, so, they're trying to work both ends of the deal here. And that's what they're gonna do, you know, because I told him, I said, "Well, if you're gonna be on them roads, you're gonna have to widen them, and you might as well put the gravel down and, and top them, and then they're done. Because you're gonna have to get up and out there to fix them." He said, "Well, that's all fine and well." He says, "But, you know, the more money you spend on the roads and trying to, you know, maintain them, get them better," he says, "It's gonna cut in your host community agreement."
Our roads are fine now, though, for the most part, so the only reason we need all that is because they're going to be, traveling them.
But they're, they're gonna have to put a, a ton of gravel and stuff on them roads more to take away the things that are hauling.
I understand that, but my point is...
I shouldn't even be a part of it, that's what, that's not them.
Right.
Right.
That's, uh, I don't...
That's why I wrote music in it. Right, that's why I wrote music in it.
No, we got local law.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't you, you want to get them pinned down before they weasel off from underneath?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's, that's...
You gotta get them on...
You can't, we're trying to get out as cheap as possible, but it's our job to make sure they get out as expensive as possible, you know.
Yep, they're gonna screw our roads up. But they're also not gonna hold us. Hold us at gunpoint.
Nope.
You know, they, we'll give you this if you give us that.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, one of the things they're using now is moving towers around from town to town, so, play that game.
Yep.
The less sewer towers, you have the less money you get.
So, okay, uh, well, I guess I was... Uh... Yeah, that's about all I got for today. Supervisors' floor.
Good.
I'll wait, but one at a time.
You got a crowd to get in here, now what am I about to say?
Oh, they just like that.
We usually don't have a lack of things to say, just nothing specific tonight.
Well, then I have, I'll actually, village of the floor then, um, Lenora's report, you heard Lenora's report. Um, the Christmas trees in the park get set up at the week after, or the day, a couple days after Thanksgiving. They're decorated that week, and then on Friday, the fourth, and Saturday, the fifth, it's that first weekend, we ask people to vote on their favorite trees by donating canned goods, or paper goods, or cleaning supplies, that then get donated to the food pantry. And the person with the most, um, unexpired products gets, you know, awarded, you know, best in youth or organization. And the reason I wanted to point that out is I'm reading this thank you note from the food pantry, and they more than doubled the meals that they dished out or dulled out this year because of COVID. So, I think if you want to tell your friends and family, it's a very critical time, and, you know, not only do we need that pretty light in the park this year, but I think the food pantry would really benefit from the support of the community with donations.
I know generally what goes on with the trees in the park, but where are the specifics on what, on how that's handled?
In terms of...
Well, there's, each tree has a, I know they're donated, and each tree has a sponsor.
The historical society, no, the historical society coordinates it. Bean Station Tree Farm has donated, Georgia's Tree Farm always donated.
Who decorated it?
Each agency. We, we send out a notice, each business, we send out a notice to the library, to the town hall.
So, it's not individuals?
It's not individuals, it's...
It can be, though.
It, uh, yeah, but usually it's, it's organizations, um, businesses, or youth organizations. And then there's different categories, so...
Thank you for that info.
They vote with the candidates.
Yeah.
Yep, that was... Serves a great purpose.
It's fun, people like it.
Okay, let's move on to old business, Leyland Dog kennel contract. Kennel contract, and, uh, that I am in permission to sign it if all agree.
Councilman I Walter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bynton, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCall, aye. Pass. Uh, the payment processing to Stuvend County for the, uh...
For credit card, huh?
Yeah.
To discuss it, alright. Councilman Bynton, make a motion to approve a, of payment of town and county taxes by credit card through the program established by Stuvend County.
Councilman I Walter, I'll second.
The, uh, motion made is second to approve the, uh, uh, contract with the county for credit card. Uh, to be able to have credit card payments made for taxes.
And that's to adopt the resolution to approve that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, that's to adopt the resolution, for, for, all favor.
Councilman I Walter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bynton, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCall, aye. M and T assessment.
Could I ask if we could move this to the end of the meeting to discuss this in a closed session with legal counsel as a pending litigation?
The M and T?
Yeah.
Okay. The highway, no higher. We touched on that, uh, already. Any, any bad...
No, I would agree with you, and so proceed from there.
Right.
But...
You know, not bad to that one.
No, long as you had your name, like...
We've been down that road once.
I thought you, I thought you...
You dropped it.
No. I thought you wanted to slow down.
Are you gonna look back for it?
Yeah.
John, for my two cents, I don't think you have a bad choice there.
Okay, repeal the tax cap. We have to have a...
You have a resolution to start the process as well as propose local law to repeal it. And that's based on the fact that the, uh, budget which you will be adopting shortly would, uh, not exceed the, uh, tax gap for the state here, which is one point five eight percent this year at least. So, if you want to proceed with, uh, repealing that, the motion to adopt the resolution would be appropriate.
Councilman Underhill, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt the resolution for the proposed local law to repeal of the tax cap waiver, local law for the year of 2021.
Councilman Bynton, a second.
Motion made is second to, yes, to, to repealing the tax cap of 2000...
Ah, there you go.
Twenty-one.
Quickly.
Uh, all favor.
Councilman I Walter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bynton, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCall, aye. Adopt the 2021 budget.
Councilman I Walter, I'll make a motion to adopt the 2019 budget.
Councilman Bynton, I'll second.
Motion made to adopt the 2021 budget, all favor.
Councilman I Walter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bynton, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCall, aye, pass. Good.
Hey, can I just jump to something real quick? I don't know if it, well, it's not too late, but get the other board members input. As I brought up to Kevin about the, the signage on these turbines, is that something that we could add?
I already made a note, we're gonna do it, that's a good point. I'd like, nobody needs to be looking up in the air and seeing a bunch of advertising.
It's horrible. I like, it's six...
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's worse than aviation, like, to me, but...
Okay, I have a flashboard for them.
Yeah, they go Viking put on.
That's hard to use.
I've got a couple items, I'm not sure if we've got time.
All right, sure.
Uh, besides foods. After the last meeting, we sent them a letter that, uh, enclosed the memo from Soil and Water and asked them to address the five points that were in that. As of last week, I'd not received a response from Stuvend Foods. So, I sent them another memo, asking them if we could have a response by tonight, and obviously, we haven't heard anything.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would like permission to send them another letter going back to the threat that we're gonna, uh, file code violations against them.
Mm-hmm.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, the other item is, one of the other items is, uh, Stuvend County. Same thing, after the last meeting, sent them a note asking what's going on and asked them for more information on the, uh, which were basically budget lines, not actual costs, nothing. I sent the county attorney a, uh, note last week, same effect, asking that we have a response by today, and nothing. I think my suggestion is, of course, whatever the board wants to do, I would suggest that we write them a letter saying, since we haven't heard from them, and keep in mind that they said they were gonna have a forest or scale the trees, or whatever, that we tell them that we're gonna go ahead and have a forest or scale the trees. And if you wanted to, if we decide to do it, actually, we could, one of the options is to use, uh, that future forest out over in, uh, on Hollow, Naples, above Naples there.
Pricey, but I, I use other people.
Well, he does his own timbering.
Yeah.
Because my son, I worked for him for, back in eighteen, for a while. But we could, uh, probably get it done for free if we decide to harvest the timber, but we gotta have, uh, if we actually decide to go ahead with it, we gotta have a co-op down there. Is anyone...
Fifty-one, fifty-two?
No, I think it's...
Sixteen?
Five eights, five eights. We, we're three eights and they're five eights. So, if that's all right, I'll send a letter to that, maybe we'll get a response by then. I'm threatening to cut down on the trees. And, see what else. You talked last month about doing an R F P for an engineer. And I started, uh, Len and I talked about using, uh, somebody who's an engineer who works for, uh, LaBella. And my question was, do we just want them to look at the, uh, water infrastructure, or do we want them to look at beyond that?
Remember, this was the engineer for...
We talked about, well, it started out, we were talking about increasing the, uh, rates for water.
Oh, right, right.
And then they, they came up, well, why are we increasing the rates when we don't know what we need to do?
Correct.
And are we gonna artificially raise them and not have enough, so on and so forth? And we talked about doing an R F P to have somebody look at the entire water district, because there's, there's a lot of components of it that, uh, really need work.
Mm-hmm.
And that way, we could prioritize them and actually know what potential cost's gonna be, and therefore, what we gotta do with the water. Which is very intelligent, because you don't want to raise rates without anything to back it up. So, do we want to limit that? And I got no problem limiting it, limiting it to the water district. Uh, of course, the engineer costs for that are gonna have to come out of just the water district. So, do we have anything else we want looked at?
Well, I'm wondering too, uh, in today's world, with, with water systems and sewers, if they couldn't get some grant help? If you went down looking into the future, what you might need in the future, and...
That could be part of the R F P, that, uh, they, that way you get some, some engineering firms that have the contacts that you need. And LaBella does, and Punt, they all have, uh, contacts. But, uh, I think we should limit it to the water right now, but if there's anything else, we could add that on.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'll finish that up, uh, for us. I, I sent some, a couple weeks ago, I sent the new wind law provisions out. We made that change to sound, and, uh, then we added on those provisions at the end about enforcement and so forth. Do we want to, uh, have a meeting to go over those?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I'm, I was very happy to hear that, uh, they're putting off their filing until February or March, because at one point, they were talking about November.
Yeah, but we knew you that was still...
But we never wasn't, uh, that was probably just to make us worried. But, um, well, there's, there's much to go under, well... But we, we do need to finalize this thing. I'll make that change, and we could change the Tony Brian, but, uh, I'd like to finalize this so we can get the ball rolling, not only to have, I want, uh, LaBella to look at it, and I want, uh, to send it, after LaBella looks at it, send it to Kevin's outfit. And then we gotta go through the process of adapting it, which is gonna take a couple months, because it's gonna have to go to the county and so forth. We gotta do the secret, so, if we could do that before...
Well, Thanksgiving's next week.
I know, it's, yeah, before December.
Lowly can't have turkey with their family, might as well come here.
Hey, yeah, we can have turkey here.
Well, we haven't worked that.
Or Madison, Chicago.
How about both?
I mean, really, there's not, I mean, we kind of went through all of it, right? So, it shouldn't be that long of a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
No, we're probably, we're at the most. You got the, the new sound provision, and you got, I think, the three or four new sections we added. Now, I'll have that other component for the, uh, advertising stuff. I mean, we were all pretty much in the program, as it would be, so... You wanna do it next week?
It works for me.
Monday night?
Monday, day, other, Thursday.
Monday, day, morning, block, daylight.
So, the August third?
Wednesday, that, which is...
Twenty, twenty-third?
Is that Wednesday?
No, try Thursday, Monday.
Monday.
Six-thirty, all right, or earlier?
Twenty-third.
Six-thirty's good.
Okay, so you'll advertise that, then?
Sure.
Thank you.
And now that's the one that's printed out right here, correct? Eleven-three, three to eleven-three.
Yeah, it should have new provisions at the end of it. I look at, at my gadgets, the, the double page.
Yeah, it's like thirteen, fourteen pages, all together.
Thirteen, yeah.
It should go up to section fourteen or something like that, I will.
Yeah, enforcement and penalties.
Right.
It just, this was in our package today.
Yeah, that's right.
I just wanted to show this was the release.
I have a vote on that, just so you know, everybody.
Right, right.
Know what?
I'd have that special meeting.
Oh, right. Councilman I Walter, I'll make a motion to schedule a special meeting Monday, November twenty-third at six-thirty, with the purpose of discussing amendments to the wind law.
I'm, 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 a second.
Motion made is second to have a special meeting on the twenty-third at six-thirty to, uh, review our changes to the wind law and to, uh, prepare to make it law. All favor.
Councilman I Walter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Bynton, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McCall, aye, pass. Very good.
Hey, did you get my airmark, the airmark? Um, I emailed it to Lori and asked her to share it with you.
When did you send it?
Today I talked to you.
Friday?
Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, I, this is for the historical society.
I don't think I've seen it.
Well, we also lost our inner, our email, our, our email for the week, so...
Yeah, we only...
Do you want this copy? And I, I have my copy. I can just, and John, I can send you a copy, too.
Thank you.
So, I can just print out a new one.
Hey, while we're discussing that, about your part-time help with the union, maybe we can just bring it up to them, and where they can make a provision, if we give them allowance moving forward. Be a fresh, fresh example of these pants that are coming back and they're...
Yeah, there's no language in the union contract that have to be from a uniform of service.
Mm-hmm.
We just, we just have to provide...
A lot of sense.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, it's, that's, that's independent practice.
Yeah, we could, we could provide uniforms. Okay, do give a T-shirt and a pair of pants, and this is your uniform. What class is your uniform? You know, I don't
I think you guys, you guys, you can't go out half-packed on this one.
No, I'm just saying, I think we should ask them if we can do a closing allowance.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to the guys, and they don't seem to be opposed to it, other than, like I said, they don't really want to take a bunch of greasy clothes home and run it through their own.
Well, let's look at this